All right, let's go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 25th. It's a order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 5:00 p.m. With that, Clerk Bullock, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
You have a quorum of the committee.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Three, the meeting minutes for April 11th, 2022. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the minutes of April 13th as written.
It's the 11th.
Okay, the 11th. Let's change that and make the correction for the record of April 11th.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Again, April 11th as written. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Four. This is public comment on agenda items. We do, as part of Committee of the Whole, we allow folks to come up essentially on a first-come, first-served basis. You do have three minutes to discuss anything on the agenda tonight. We have three discussion-action items. We also have seven different presentations from our departmental directors. So with that being said, is there anyone from the public that would like to make public comment? All right, please state your name for the record, and then we'll give you three minutes.
Loretta Stanaway. Two quick things I raised last time at the council meeting, that there is language in the ballot proposal for the sale of that small section of North Cemetery that needs to be altered. It says "for sale," quote, "or otherwise dispose of," quote. And we need to pull that "otherwise dispose of" phrase. I spoke with the mayor after the meeting last time, and he indicated he didn't think that would be a difficulty. And I thought it would be pulled before tonight's paperwork went through. It hasn't been. And I spoke again with the director this morning, and he indicated he would send a message to the attorney and the assistant attorney about that. Our goal would be to get that language pulled from the proposed language before tonight's meetings are over with. Otherwise, our group, the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries, would have to pull our support for that proposal, sale of the land. And secondly, just happy to continue to be contributing to the Parks and Rec revenue stream with the sales of the columbarium niches at the Fracture Memorial Garden and with the sale of burial sites at Evergreen Cemetery Section G. We are still continuing to help reduce the subsidy to the cemeteries in the budget, and we're happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Come on down.
I also have handouts, if I can. Don't know how to get that to you. Good evening. My name's Lisa Bonney. I'm the Executive Director of Resolution Services Center. We're a nonprofit that's been in Lansing for over 30 years. We are designated as a community dispute resolution organization, and what that means is we provide conflict resolution. Our programs incorporate the schools where we do restorative practices. We work with the Lansing Police and also the HRCS for our juvenile diversion program. And we also provide a service to the courts of doing mediation for all sorts of domestic, general civil, probate, or any type of case that can be brought before the court. I am here tonight to talk to the committee about requesting some funding for the small claims work that we are doing for 54A District Court. This is something that started two years ago, and when COVID hit and all the courts closed, they needed to come up with some resources to provide access to justice for the citizens of Lansing. They called on Resolution Services. We responded immediately, and we are handling all the small claims cases for the city of Lansing. What that means is that in 2021, we did over 225 cases of small claims. That's almost 500 people. We are doing this because, one, we're providing access for the citizens because they can do this from their home or office through Zoom. We also are giving them some scheduling options, so it isn't like they have to take a day off work to show up at the courthouse just to have their small claims case heard. We're also doing this efficiently with the fact that we're closing most of these cases within 30 days. By the time it gets referred to us, we're scheduling those mediations and then getting the information back to the courts within that 30 days. We're also doing this as no charge, no charge to the citizens and no charge to the courts. We do this as part of our mission, but to do that, it's taken so much of our staff time. That's why we're going out and requesting funding from the different courts in the county. We've talked to the Ingham County Board of Commissioners, and they are providing funding for the services we do for their court in Mason. And we're also in conversations with the city of East Lansing to do this same type of request for the services we're doing there. And as you know, as a nonprofit, we have a variety of sources of funding that we write grants. We come up and ask for community funding to provide these services so we can continue to do it efficiently, effectively, and at no charge. And I'm just going to say thank you. I'm going to stay around for the meeting, and so if you have any other further questions, I can be available.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Do we have any other members of the gallery of the public wishing to make public comment? Seeing none. That brings us to Discussion Action Item Number Five, Letter B. This is Place on File Executive Directive 2022-01. This deals with Michigan Protection Advocacy Service Records Request Policy. Quick distinction needs to be made between executive orders and executive directives. When this first came to us, Vice President Wood and myself, along with our office manager, had some conversations. We had never seen one of these, frankly, and we didn't truly know what to do with it. And so, in any event, we engaged the mayor's office, we engaged the city attorney's office, and learned that there is a distinction between the two executive orders. We actually considered one at our April 11th meeting, deal with things such as reorganizing departments. Those are subject to legislative review, number one. And number two, they do carry the force of law, so we actually have some part to play in that process. As it pertains to executive directives, however, they do not carry the force of law, number one. And number two, they are not subject to legislative review. Essentially, this was sent to us in error. This deals with departmental, or I should say, internal policy, implementation of internal policy. The mayor issues a number of these directive executives throughout the year, and this, again, was sent to us in error. Because of that, we asked if we could simply absolve ourselves, essentially, of this issue, and we were told by the city attorney's office that would be just a bit cleaner if we moved to place on file. So with that being said, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move to place on file the executive directive of 2022-01.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to a resolution of reappointment for Mr. Anthony Mullen. Anthony, if you want to come on down here, we certainly appreciate you being here. You can actually come right through the double doors and you can take a seat right here. Make sure that the green light is on, in terms of the microphone. You'll pull it maybe just a little bit closer to you so that folks can hear you. But again, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. Again, we have a resolution of reappointment. This is for an at-large position on the Board of Water and Light for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Of course, Mr. Mullen has been with us, I think, for about 10 years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Roughly, okay, roughly 10 years. For the public, the Board of Water and Light is governed by a Board of Commissioners, contemplated by the city charter. There are eight members, voting members, I should say, four at-large, four ward representatives. The positions are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by council. And then, post-Ice Storm 2013, 2014, we have had, or I should say, we have had since, three non-voting advisory board members. And those folks serve for, I should say, municipalities within, outside of Lansing, but within the Board of Water and Light service territory. So in any event, we do have a resolution in front of us to reappoint, again, through June 30th, 2025. And what we're going to do, Mr. Mullen, is allow you to talk to us just a little bit about your time maybe on the board, maybe, you know, your interest in terms of continuing to serve, and then we'll open it up for questions from the body.
Thank you very much. As you said, I've been doing this for 10 years. It really takes a couple of years to get your ducks in a row, to figure out exactly what you're doing and how to do it. You need to learn the questions to ask. I have not been involved with city government or with municipal government at all before that, so I really didn't know exactly what I was doing for the first couple of years. And I learned. And I've since been reappointed before this time, and I've used that experience to help the constituents of the city of Lansing. I'm really kind of proud of what we have been doing over the last couple of years. We're opening up the Delta Energy Plant. I came in at the very tail end of the Rio Plant, so I really can't say anything about that. But the Ultium Plant, the battery plant the GM is opening, I think that speaks well to what the Board of Water and Light means to the city. We, in my humble opinion, I think that there are three legs that the city, or that the Board of Water and Light, that we have to be responsible to. We have to be responsible. One leg is to the city, our owners. The second leg is to our workers. We have to really pay attention to that they're treated well, that they receive the best benefits and wages that we can possibly afford, while at the same time not bankrupting for our owners, the city of Lansing. And also, the third leg is for our ratepayers. Right now, we have, I think, a 14% differential for our residential owner, our residential ratepayers with our, with consumers' energy. That's a lot of money. You know, when you go to pay your electric bill, and you're paying literally 14% less than the people who live in Grand Rapids, I think that's pretty cool. And that's all because it's, our job is to make, one of our jobs is to make sure that it's as affordable as possible for our ratepayers. I'm looking forward to what we're going to do in the future. We want to bring in more business. We want to raise our income, not on the backs of our ratepayers, but on new business. We want to bring in, you know, marijuana growers. You know, they use a lot of electricity. Let's provide that electricity to them. And at the same time, we want to make sure that that electricity is as sustainably sourced as is reasonable. And I say is reasonable because everybody would like to go to 100% renewables right now, but we just can't do that. We wouldn't be able to keep the lights on. So we need to have some fossil fuels for the foreseeable future, but we want to bring that down as fast as we possibly can. We're going to get completely out of the business of coal plants really, really soon. It'll be 100% gas for our fossil fuels, and we want to get rid of that as soon as we can as well. Now, my personal goal, I want to see what we can do about avoiding 100% of the cutoffs of water. I personally think that water is a human right, and we can't, we can't afford to let everybody just get by without paying their bills. But at the same time, people need to have water to survive, and we got to figure out a way that we can do that. Haven't figured it out yet, but I'm working with the general manager and with the finance department to see what we can do to make sure that we can make it as affordable as possible for everybody.
I appreciate that. Do we have questions from the body? Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for being here tonight, Anthony. I appreciate you. Appreciate your willingness to serve, your dedication to the Lansing and Board of Water and Light. Could you tell me when the Erickson Powerhouse, the coal-burning powerhouse, is going to be decommissioned, and, you know, what steps are you moving forward to get that decommissioned?
The Erickson Plant?
Erickson, sorry.
And I'm going to look over my shoulder to the gentleman over there who might know, but it's really soon. It's going to be, I think it's going to be within 2022 and 2023. And we're also looking at the Bell River Plant that we have a purchase power agreement with, our coal plant, and I think that's going to be gone by 2025. So we're going to be within the next couple of years, and I apologize for not knowing the exact dates. We will be out of the coal business very, very soon. Yes, we are, we just built a brand-new gas turbine plant, but that's got 80% less emissions than a coal plant. That's pretty impressive right there.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thank you.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins, for coming, and thank you for your service. And I'm sure you know which direction I'm probably going in by now. So one thing you said is that the coal does 80% less emissions. Are you factoring in the, what happens with fracking when it's natural gas at the beginning before it's burned?
No, I'm looking at just exactly at coal versus natural gas, not necessarily where coal came from or where natural gas came.
So you are aware that the full process, even for natural gas, makes that level a lot more comparable than 80% better? You put on your application for qualifications and eligibility, I know it's short, and I know you're going to get passed probably, but that you have multiple years of experience as board member for your qualifications and eligibility. And I know you do have nine or 10 years. But have you done any continuing education when it comes to, like, the effects of natural gas and fossil fuels? And have you read the International Panel on Climate Change Report? Reports, now there's a few of them that's out.
I cannot say that I read the report itself. I have read a multitude of reports on the report, for want of a better word. As to education, with the exception of the COVID years, every year we have education through the American Public Power Association, and we have a number of seminars that we attend where we can learn about what's happening with fracking, what's happening with decommissioning of coal plants, what happens with the, you know, with the difference of pushing solar power with the "not in my backyard" efforts when it comes to wind power. So yes, I do have some education. Honestly, it's mostly self-education when I read, and I read a lot about these various efforts. My biggest concern is, though, we can't have power blackouts. We can't have our people going without energy. And Michigan is a difficult place because the sun shines during the summer, which is good, and then we can get the solar power, but the wind blows during the winter, and we can't necessarily put a wind energy around here. It's very difficult to balance out needs versus our outcome, outgo versus income when it comes to energy like that. And we're doing our best to try to balance that out. Also, cost, you know, the, our average ratepayers' income is relatively low compared to some of the other places. We'd have to raise our prices if we were going to go any more with the renewable resources than we're doing. So we are going to get there, but it's going to take us a little bit more time.
Thank you. And just a couple more questions. So there's, you know, as the years go on, there's, like, conversation, who's responsible for this? Is it the world? Is it local? Is it federal? What's your take on?
It's all of us.
On local responsibility?
It's our responsibility. We've been living off of these coal plants for the last 125 years, so it's our responsibility as well. And so it's our responsibility to resolve it. You know, we put up the, well, we were involved with the purchase power agreement with the solar field out in Delta Township, and we also have one that we are involved with on the west side of the state, and a wind project in the Thumb area. But it's not, it's not enough. We need to do more. We need to increase our renewables. We absolutely have to.
Well, yeah, I agree, of course. I think you have to because it's in your, now it's like the mission statement for however many years by many years percentage. So you mentioned three legs.
Mm-hmm.
City responsibility, workers, and ratepayers.
Right.
Do you think there could be a fourth leg, future generations?
Well, that would be the ratepayers and the workers. They're people, too. And, you know, the thing is, is that you have this power plant. We had a presentation by my allergy doctor, Ashley, about five or six years ago, and they're talking about the downwind results for asthma from power plants, and how as that smoke gets blown downwind, the children that live downwind have a higher rate of asthma and other respiratory problems. So honestly, we need to take care of everybody. But you're absolutely right. The world is important. The natural world is important. I'm not going to necessarily say that we need to put it as a fourth pillar, but I think that that's represented by our workers and by our ratepayers. And by our city, you know, the city, you guys are people, too.
Right. But there is a conflict between, you know, workers who's trained to do coal stuff and who works on this old infrastructure versus the need to move on or re-educate and retrain. All right, I'm almost done, I promise. Two more things here.
No problem.
And I think you're answering these very well, for what it's worth. So you mentioned that you're trying to get off coal or gas as quick as possible, but you also have a new gas plant that just became operational in the.
Right.
We're bonding out for however many years and however many millions of dollars in the future. So what's the balance of trying to get off that and not having a stranded asset, which it will be if we move to our progression like we're supposed to?
Interestingly enough, with this new Delta Energy Plant, it's got a, some of the, and I don't know the exact number of the turbines, but there's a certain percentage of our electrical output that is dedicated for peak power. So in other words, when it's 95 degrees and 120% humidity next July, there's going to be a certain amount of power that we're going to pull from the solar plants. There's a certain amount of power we're going to pull from the wind plants, and then a certain amount of power that we're going to pull from the turbines that are always going to run, January through December. But when it gets really hot and really humid, and everybody turns their air conditioning on, then we're going to use that, those turbines that are just for peak power. Now, there's nothing to say that we can't decrease that amount of peak power. So the peak is up here, normal is down here. Well, this normal, when it comes to peak, maybe we can replace some of that, or we will replace some of that with solar power, with wind power. Honestly, I'd kind of like to look into nuclear power, but I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. It's too expensive. But it is a green, it is a green energy. But the point being is, is that we will decrease the amount of, we already planned it. It's already planned in how we built this new plant with the knowledge that a lot of what's going to be done every day is going to be through wind power and solar power, which, if the sun isn't shining, we still need to have power. So we have to have that peak power going on.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Brown, then Vice President Wood.
Thank you so much, Council President, as well as Mr. Mullen for being here. I just wanted to say it's very refreshing to see such an informed board member and serving for over a decade. Really shows your commitment and the knowledge that you've acquired really is impressive. So many times, you know, when you're volunteering for a board, people might only do a year or two, but to have a long-term commitment as well as to continue the education and even, you know, share so much information today has been very impressive. So I just want to thank you for your service to the community.
I appreciate it.
I would certainly echo that. Vice President Wood.
Tony, I ask you this question when you've been up here before, but again, for the record, what is your opinion about the sale of the Board of Water and Light?
You know, funnily enough, four years ago, I would have given you a wibble-wobble, but not this time. I am 100% opposed to selling the Board of Water and Light at any time soon. We provide so much, you know, and I'm not trying to pat myself on the back or anything like that, but we're, we have had a number of these get-togethers, for want of a better word, where we pull together state, federal, local resources to help people pay their bills because so many people fell behind during the pandemic. Well, we're going to have more of those coming down. That's, consumer power is not going to do something like that. An investor-owned utility is not going to get together with the state and try to figure out how to get people to pay their bills. That's something that we do because we are locals, you know?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Unless there's other questions, I'd be glad to move this.
I just had one. So my understanding is you applied for your reappointment back in May of 2021. I do believe this position actually expired in June of 2021. So this is actually for either Jane or Mark. Why are we just now getting this? Do you know?
I'm ahead of you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, Vice President Wood.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the appointment, but on top of Councilmember or President Hussein's question, if we could look into that and get an answer to counsel, I mean, it's a year old, so it would be advantageous to understand why it took so long. So thank you. With that, my motion.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to Item Six. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here. And just so folks know, that will be on consent tonight. We do not do swearing-in for reappointments. So, Mr. Mullen, again, we appreciate you. And if you want to stick around, great, but again, there will be no official swearing-in tonight. Okay? All right, that brings us to our departmental budgets. This is round two. So folks kind of got to look at the process last, sorry, two weeks ago, on April 11th. What we are doing a little bit differently this year is we're actually bringing departmental directors down into the well. And anybody in terms of their department that, you know, essentially is going to assist with their presentation, we have actually provided five questions that we want them to answer. We're really asking folks to kind of hone in on the budget this year as opposed to providing us, you know, with annual reviews and presentations and things of that nature. I thought it worked out very well on April 11th. Most departmental directors took about five minutes, which allowed us about 10 minutes to engage in questions and answers. We have, again, seven departments that will be presenting tonight. The questions, just very, very quickly as a review. Number one, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? Number three, are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? Number four, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? And lastly, are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget, and if so, please provide specifics? That being said, Vice President Wood and myself are also committed to working with departmental directors after our budget process is done, May 16th, to bring folks back in that want to talk about some of the services that they're providing, some of the highlights of the past year. We certainly, we know you guys are doing great work. We certainly want you guys to, you know, be as front-facing as possible and be able to boast and things of that nature about what you're doing, but also to create some measure of access. And information is, of course, empowerment. So with that being said, we are first looking to our District Court. We have Anethia Brewer. Yes, she is here, our court administrator. Looks like she might be bringing some folks down with her.
Chief Judge.
Judge Buchanan, yep. And I'm not certain who the other.
Chief Newman, Susan Neeling.
Oh, Susan, okay, great. It's good to see all three of you. Thanks so much for being here. We appreciate it. All right, so I don't know if you paid attention a couple weeks ago, but really what we would like you to do is just kind of go through those five questions, provide us those answers, and then we'll open it up for questions from the body. Okay? Thanks so much for being here.
There we go. Better.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello, council. It's good to be in front of you in person. Once again, it's been a long couple of years. Again, I have with me our newly-appointed Chief Judge Stacia Buchanan, and this is her first round with the budget process, and our deputy administrator, Susan Neeling. Before I answer the five questions, I just want to go on record thanking a couple of departments, specifically Information Technology and our Facilities Department, because we were the ones in City Hall during the closure during the pandemic, and they took so good care of us. So I wanted to acknowledge that tonight in front of the council. So what is different from our budget? And actually, not much at all. 80% of our budget still is allocated toward personnel costs. We do have a number of vacant positions right now, but we are still assessing and analyzing where we are as a court from the number of changes that we've made during the pandemic process. I'm quite sure you all know the judicial branch actually had as many challenges as everyone else did, and we took on a lot of different changes that we had to make during that time. So we are waiting to see how our court work now looks before we decide what's going to happen with the vacant positions that we have. But 80% of our budget, everything else, status quo. Are there any service changes that our department is responsible for or why? There are no official changes that we're responsible for. However, I would like to share a couple of things that we've been doing that's in addition to our work. Right now, most of you have heard about the new PII or personal identifying information that we are no longer able to share and/or provide copies of. That includes date of births, social security numbers, driver's license numbers, state IDs, things of that nature. And it took us a while because working with our vendors, a lot of our stuff is online, a lot of the forums are formal, and so we've been working with our justice partners, our vendors, to make sure that we are in adherence to what's required of us. We're also taking several steps to stay in step with the national and state trends on ability to pay during COVID. During COVID, we did not warrant or summon people in the court for not being able to pay. What we've spent our time doing is working with them, either modifying or preparing payment plans that would fit their financial needs. So although not a change in service, just an adjustment of how we're doing things. And the last example I'd like to share, of course, the clean slate legislation came out during COVID, and that was a big deal. So we've spent a significant amount of time supporting our local law office with expungement clinics, providing judgments of sentences, waiving the certification fees to make sure that our citizens are, have a successful process for that. So I wanted to share those things. Next, are there any rate increases? And if so, yes, we have only one. We will be increasing our civil infractions by $5. We have not done so since 2018. That will be the only rate increase we are proposing for our upcoming budget. Are there any major equipment purchases? We do not have any, although we are looking forward to some of the technology upgrades that will come in from information technology, which just helps us with a lot of our online and electronic processes that have now come in to help us be more efficient. That is already allocated in the upcoming budget by IT. Now, are we eliminating, combining, or contracting positions? We are not. We definitely are looking again at where we are as a court, the services we need to provide, and where we may need additional help as far as processing. At this time, we're doing fairly well where we sit and how we are moving things along. We are not fully open as far as 100% everyone back in the court. The judges have maintained a hybrid process, which works very well, not just for the court, but for our citizens, people who can step out on a break and have a Zoom call for a couple of minutes, meet with their probation officer without having to take off and come down and park. So those are the types of things that we are doing in district court. So we are now open for questions. Our budget hasn't changed much at all. As a matter of fact, the status quo from the last budget, we're still waiting to see how things are going to fare out for us. As we move back to normal, we're starting to see some increases in our filings in traffic criminal as well as the civil side of the court. So those are the things we're still assessing and will be able to respond to at later date.
We appreciate that. Judge Buchanan or Mrs. Neeling, do you guys have anything to add?
No, I'm new to the budget process, so I defer a lot to Anethia on this. I'm learning budget from her because she's been doing this for our court for, I think, over a decade now.
Yes.
And so.
If you want to pull that mic just a little bit closer. Thanks so much.
Nobody ever thought I was quiet. I can assure you of that. So I'm just pleased to be your new chief judge, and I'm learning the process, so bear with me as I learn.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I really don't have anything to add. I think Anethia brings me along, just in case you have any juror questions.
All right, thanks so much. Vice President Wood.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure, Anethia, whether you will answer these or Jake. I'm questioning the fact that there is a difference of over $500,000 in the retirement fringes. Can someone speak to if we're not changing how we're employing people? I'd like to know how you came up with this amount of difference based on the fact that our proposed budget is just about the same.
Jake, why don't you take Mark's seat just, why don't you take Mark's seat just for a moment? Yep. All right, we appreciate you being here as always.
Yep. I apologize, Mark, for stealing your chair. So overall, our calculation of fixed fringe benefits comes largely from the actuary reports, which are provided by our actuary, Boomerstein. One thing that has changed this fiscal year is that we are moving from, I'm sorry, can you hear me well? We are moving from a model that is pay-as-you-go to an actuarially determined employer contribution. So one of the ways that we previously funded our OPEB systems is that we calculated our annual anticipated cost of the benefits and allocated it to our employees on what is roughly per capita basis. Now, one thing that is changing in that we are paying the actuarially determined employer contribution is that our police and fire plan is much more underfunded than our employee retirement plan. And so when you're paying down the relative amortization cost of all of that underfunded liability, that results in increased costs to the police and fire plans, which is required to get them caught up to date in their funding status, but less for the employee retirement side. So employees who are in the employee retirement side will cost less because we're paying, we don't need to pay so much on the amortization side. Police and fire, we're catching up to funded status, and so we're paying more.
Okay, I understand what you just said, except I'm taking a quick look at, this is the public service, and with the public service under the retirement, there was a difference of $429. So I mean, I just find the spread rather large. So if you could give me some other departments and be able to show what those are, I would appreciate that. My next question, considering that Anethia talked about the fact that they were going to be looking at additional software and things like that, the IT budget went down $40,000. So I'm assuming, because having had her in Ways and Means, I know they talked about the fact that they were trying to get laptops and a number of other things, so I find it odd that this went down by $40,000. So if we could get an explanation on that.
Okay.
Okay. Anethia, now a question for you. We did have the Resolution Services Center of Central Michigan that came forward and spoke about what they're doing in small claims. Could you speak to, a little bit to us about that?
Yes, I can. During COVID, during the pandemic, we utilized Resolution Services for a lot of the mediations so that we wouldn't have people coming in and out of the building. They had the ability to schedule, to Zoom hearings, and to mediate and resolve cases versus us being close to the public and being able to handle that, and just with only one magistrate in the volume that we have. Resolution Services did reach out to the district court, in which we then talked with the executive office about how we would want to address their request. And the mayor indicated, because they are already, the city is already supporting them with, through HRCS and some other programs, that we would work together with the deputy mayor, with HRCS, to determine the best way to handle the request that's coming through. He did not think that it would be something that should have been in the court's budget. So we are working as a team, so hopefully the executive office will give us an idea. They, we are still funneling a number of small claims cases through Resolution Services. They've been very successful. I think our customers, our citizens, have been very welcoming and like the process of going there versus actually coming to court. So if you want some stats or numbers from us regarding the number of cases, I'd be more than willing to provide.
I would be glad to have that, but what I think I'm hearing from you in a nutshell is you believe that this service is beneficial to the courts, and anything that we can do to make sure that this continues is something that you'd like to see.
That is exactly what I'm saying.
Do I have that in a nutshell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Just off that same topic, so when, how is Resolution Services referred to the people who want to use it, I assume? And are there ever any circumstances where it's contested and they need to have a judge's decision?
Yes, it is. There are some people that will say they do not want to go to mediation, they would prefer to come to court before a magistrate or a judge. If that is the case, that's what we schedule for. You're welcome.
All right. Are there other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
All right. That takes us to Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement. I do believe we have both Delisa Fontaine, who is the director of the department, as well as Amber Paxton, who leads up our Office of Financial Empowerment. Come on down. How's it going, Delisa? Good. How are you, Amber?
Good.
Good to see you. So make sure the green light is on. Yep, and we appreciate you being here last, last meeting, so you know exactly how this goes. So if you want to go ahead and run down answers to the five questions, then we'll open it up for questions from the body. Thanks so much.
Gotcha. I did submit a presentation, not sure if it's going to pop up, but you also have physical copies in the folders that you received.
Yeah, so what we're, so what we're doing, Delisa, is we're not going to do any presentations or anything of that nature. Those things that have been provided, council members do have that in their, in their packets. So what we want to do, just so we can really get into that, that Q and A piece, is we want to just hear the answers to the five questions that were proposed. Yep, and then we will open it up for questions from the body.
Okay. So jumping right in, what is the difference in your budget? Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you move that microphone a little bit closer, make sure it's on? Is the green light on?
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Pardon?
Maybe just bring it a little bit, angle it a little bit toward you.
Like that? Is that better?
Maybe lean in a little bit. Let's see what we got.
Is that better?
The green light is on, yes, that is much better. All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, here we go. Okay. What is the difference in your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Our current fiscal year, we have a budget of $1,232,199, and we do have a difference of $980,434 going up due to the addition of 311 being added to our department. We are adding a grant administrator position. This administrator position will be a full-time position, added to accommodate the number of new grants, funded projects, and programs that OFE has successfully applied for, and this will add additional line item items, but $15,000 of that per year will be paid for as a line item from the grants that we receive. So we will be using general funds plus grant funds for that. And then there is an $80,000 decrease in our line items, but that is because the neighborhood grant program has moved to the ARPA budget, which has allowed us to have 150% increase over the next two years. So that's our answer for the first one. For the second question, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? And that is the 311 call center, one call to City Hall. We have added that division to our department, so that is the change in service we have. Are there any rate changes or fee increases? And if so, why? No. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. The answer is no. And that's it.
All right. Amber, do you have anything to add? No? All right. Do we have questions from the body? Vice President Wood.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the 311 system. I'm assuming, maybe rightly or wrongly, you are not the one who's determined the allocation for the various departments on the funding process of that. Am I correct?
Correct. That was determined by our finance department.
Okay. So to the finance department, as an example, we have $37,000 that's being charged to City Council as part of the 311. We have staff that answers our phone every single day between eight and five and knows how to direct people. Why are we paying that money and other departments are not paying?
Overall, this is an additive service. The ultimate goal of the City 311 program is to do a very similar service to what your current staff is capably doing now, which will alleviate the administrative burden on them, providing better service to our citizens, it's not having to identify, how do I call someone in the City Council's office who can then direct me to the appropriate department, and that department can funnel me to the correct service? But rather, I can pick up the phones, call 311, and ask, hey, how do I pay my trash and recycling bill? And they can get me there immediately. So this service is currently active. It is currently allocated after discussions with the 311 director or manager to, on a per capita basis, to the public-facing departments of the city. The reason being that despite the fact that we are currently in the process of opening up 311 citywide, and there are some departments that have not fully adopted the software, it is intended to be a one-stop shop when it's fully activated. And if we were to bear the brunt of the cost on the handful of departments who are currently fully using the service, that would be a huge cost on their department's budgets unless it would disincentivize anyone else from adopting the service. So overall, this funding strategy also provides us the opportunity to charge other funds for the benefits that they receive. So if I'm, so if we had this as a, say, a general fund department standalone, it would cost overall the general fund about $1 million. Now, if I call 311 and my problem is with parking, with trash, with recycling, these are all distinct self-serviced funds, and by charging it this way, they are charged for their portion of the service that they are benefiting from by having 311 as a service.
Well, first of all, unless staff wants to correct me, I do not believe our staff has felt that they were overburdened to answer the phones for counsel. Second, I don't believe that there has been a discussion among council members that we want the administration to be responsible for things that are handled from council. Council is a separate entity. I understand how we do this with IT. I'm not sure that I agree with this for the 311.
Okay.
So I, I just, there's just a lot of things that I'm, I'm concerned about with this particular entity, to be perfectly honest, and how, knowing whether there are, I look at it similar to when we have the police, and I see Chief Ellery Salisbury here, and we have an officer that tells our neighborhoods, if you've got an issue, I want you to call dispatch and tell them so that we can follow up on this. Have dispatch turn around and tell them, well, I don't know why you're calling us because there's nothing that we can do about it. We function differently up here, and there are different issues with constituents and things like that, that an operator might not have any knowledge of based on some of our interaction that we have as individual council members with our constituency. So I, I just, I have some concerns with that.
No, thank you for your input. That's something we can definitely consider if you want to discuss alternate funding strategies. They all have consequences in terms of how much burden it places on the general fund as opposed to other funds, but that's definitely something that we can consider. It might be that, given that you do have a robust internal system, we could work out a solution where we can reflect a minor cost for 311 being able to direct a citizen concern to your own council member, secretary, and staff. But yeah, we'd be glad to discuss that and further. And if you have questions on the specific service itself, Amber Paxton and Delisa Fontaine are very capable and talented people who can explain that system.
We appreciate that. We have Councilman Brown, Spatafor, and then Councilman Garza.
I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could get that in. Delisa, when you talked about the fact that the ARPA money was going to take up the neighborhood grants for two years, what discussion was done, knowing that this is a program that has existed for over 20 years, that then come two years from now, you'll have to absorb this into your budget again? Or is the assumption we're not going to be doing neighborhood grants after that?
We've never had the assumption that we wouldn't do neighborhood grants after that. I think that we, we're excited about the opportunity of using ARPA funds to Um, I think that we, we're excited about the opportunity of using ARPA funds to increase to two hundred thousand dollars each year versus the eighty thousand we currently have, and, um, my goal would be to fight for that amount after.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Um, could you, uh, than, thank you for being here today and, and, um, presenting. Could you explain a little bit more about, uh, your grant administrator and what that, what that looks like? And I know that you talked about, um, having it be kind of self-sustaining as you go forward.
Sure, I'm going to defer to Amber because that's right in the OFE shop.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Um, so we have been a victim of our own success the last few years, where we've written so many successful grant proposals, um, that we are sort of drowning our staff. Um, our staff's actually, on the OFE team, has only got three full-time people, and one is dedicated to a specific program. And so this, this time was coming for a while, um, but it will allow us to stay on the cutting edge. Municipal financial empowerment is a very specific field, and it's growing and changing very fast because it's very new. And so it's just a ma, a matter of if we're going to continue to be highlighted as, as one of the leaders in the field, we're gonna need a little, little help with some of the grants administration. And so it's, it's really covering things like making sure we don't miss deadlines, making sure reports are done on time, making sure that the finances are tracked carefully and that sort of thing. And we are looking at about a five percent charge to, so when we write future grant proposals, included in that will be a five percent line item for grant administration. Um, keep in mind, too, that we have, one of our contracts is six hundred thousand dollars. It's not in the budget that you see because it's completely leveraged, um, and that's from the Department of Corrections. And so in that one as well, we get about twenty percent, actually, of general administration for that one. Um, but we're gonna start really moving toward paying for our grant writing and grant administration out of grants.
Oh, fantastic. And you talked about, uh, some of the results over the last couple of years. Do you have, uh, kind of, I, you know, I know you don't have every number in front of you, but do you have the gist that you've gotten about, you know, five hundred thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand? When you're saying you're now overwhelmed, uh, kind of what does that look like?
On top of the six hundred thousand dollar contract we have with the state for offender success, uh, we raised about three hundred thousand in grants last year, last fiscal year.
Fantastic. And what is your expectation if you have this position? Do you feel that you would be able to expand?
You know, it's really hard to say because it kind of depends on the length and breadth of the grants. Um, for instance, when we took on the What Works Cities grant, we did nothing else for two years because it was such a huge project, so much lift. Um, but I would say that, you know, I would expect we could get closer to a million in leveraged funds or, if we're counting that six hundred thousand, I think we could be very well over a million next year.
Okay, so that'd be a good investment.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then with the 3-1-1, um, could you explain kind of, I know we've had, and we've brought it up here at council before, um, some challenges we've had with Lansing Connect. Um, is that the same type of system that we created internally, or how, how do we know or how are we confident that we're gonna get a high-level result, um, from having it be a one-stop shop, which is exciting, uh, but how do we know that we have a system or infrastructure in place to ensure that we're doing high-quality, uh, if I can say, customer service for our constituents and our community members?
So in, in your package, you have kind of a 3-1-1 introduction, uh, thing that I put together for you, and it's got some testimonials in there. Uh, one I'd like to bring to your attention would be, uh, one of our call center agents, Benny, took a call from a, um, disabled resident who had a complaint about a, um, crosswalk. I don't know the actual name of it, but the button said you can get the crosswalk so you can cross. Well, his wheelchair can't go into the grass, so he can push the button. So by calling 3-1-1, he was able to directly speak to a customer service, uh, representative, get his complaint on file. We were able to, uh, get public service, uh, we were able to put the thing into public service so that they could fix it. He actually has a date as to when that will be completed. Versus if he would have had the Lansing Connect app, he would have had to take the picture, upload the photo, and go through the process that way, but this way, it could be prioritized. So, um, that's one, uh, one testimonial. We've had another one where we had a caller who was a Spanish-speaking caller, and we, our call center agents actually speak five different languages. And so they were actually able to walk this gentleman through a lot of different processes, not just city processes, but actually some of the 2-1-1 processes, and get him the resources he needed to, uh, help him and his wife.
That's excellent. Thank you for explaining that, because that, that does make a difference. Uh, when you are looking at, um, with that process, um, how, is there a survey, or how do we kind of have key performance indicators to know that we are doing?
Well, uh, as of right now, there's no survey. You've got actual residents who call and, and say how thankful they are for it. From January to, uh, this date in April, they've taken over two thousand calls, and we've just done a soft launch. And the reason why they've taken so many calls is because instead of that hold message you get when you call City Hall's main number, now you can hold and actually get an actual person. And so they have been answering calls and resolving issues for residents as of now. The, uh, the call center is able to pull reports, which we will get.
Can you turn?
Oh. The call center will actually get reports that we will report weekly in our cabinet meetings as to what type of calls have been received, what departments they have been received, uh, from, what has been resolved, things of that nature. So we do have reports that we can pull, uh, to show that.
Fantastic. Well, I really appreciate that. And lastly, um, we, we're not outsourcing this call center.
No, these are full-time city employees.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and so, and there is a clear distinction. Uh, so when we talk about this particular call center, how many staff members do we have, number one?
We have, uh, six call center agents and one supervisor.
Okay, how many languages are spoken?
Five languages currently.
Five languages? Okay. Um, and this is not going to supplant Lansing Connect? This is supplemental two?
This is supplemental two.
Okay.
I mean, you still have the option of, if you're taking a walk, you see a pothole, you want to up, upload the photo, the geographic location, you can still do that. If you want to call and speak directly to someone, you can do that, or you can call someone's direct line, you can still do that.
And are we still going to have a citizen advocate? Because it sounds a lot like what I thought the citizen advocate was supposed to be doing.
We will still have a citizen's advocate in the mayor's office, yes.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Spatafor, then Councilman Garza.
Sure. Um, I think you already answered my first question. The total cost is around a million dollars a year, is that right? Is that, or the num, the FTE in the system, or?
Yes.
Thanks, Jake. Okay. Um, and then my other question is, I mean, this is all fungible money, right? Like, it's not like council's budget was a hundred dollars last year, and you're charging us thirty-seven dollars out of that hundred dollars to pay for, for 3-1-1. Now, you've added thirty-seven thousand dollars to the council budget to accommodate the inclusion of the 3-1-1?
Yes. So overall, there's di, two different ways that we could fund this program. We could include this, overall, 3-1-1 costs a million dollars to provide to the city of Lansing. We could fund that in the general fund, and that's a million-dollar cost to the general fund. Uh, however, we have other funds which are benefiting, and so by treating it instead as an internal service fund and charging those funds appropriately, we are sharing the costs across city funds.
So, but there's no issue if, say, for instance, we left everything, um, the same, but moved the thirty-seven thousand dollar allocation to a different department and pulled it out of the council budget? It's not gonna affect the ability to charge the external facing funds, correct?
No, we could move it. If you said that, uh, city council should not be part of that allocation, I could recalculate the figures as if, uh, this department didn't exist as part of the service.
Cool.
Or I could exclude elected officials in general from the per capita count, and then you would only have your internal auditor. Well, actually, I think, I don't include you because you're an internal service.
Just your two employees?
So just, yeah.
Then the other question I have is a broader one. Um, it's not about the department, but I'm gonna call dance regardless of how you arrange the acronym. Um, so in this presentation, you mentioned a one hundred and fifty percent increase in neighborhood grants, which is amazing and awesome and great, but part of that is a calculation of a reduction of eighty thousand dollars in general fund money for this year and next year. How much, this is for you, Jake, in the entire budget, are we sort of, uh, moving out of the general fund, I think to Councilmember Wood's concern, which is my concern as well, eighty thousand dollars out of the department, the department's budget this year, while still funding the program with free money from Washington, will result in an eighty thousand dollar deficit when ARPA four doesn't materialize? So how much money in this budget is being supplanted by ARPA funds that we're gonna have to deal with in the next two years as a structural deficit to the city's budget?
The continuing, uh, programs that I can list are the neighborhood grants, uh, the arts and culture grants, advanced peace, uh, which I believe was originally intended as, uh, several-year contracts, so I'm not sure of the intended lifetime of that. Uh, and we are doing the facade program through ARPA. So it's those four items.
Okay. So that's.
Each one is receiving an increase through these.
Right, absolutely, okay. And why, what was the, um, why not keep the general fund number the same in this budget and then use ARPA funds to sup, supplement rather than supplant these dollars?
Just an accounting decision.
Oh.
Easier to account for it that way. Now, we could, uh.
But there is, it's not, there's no doubt, you're not spending it twice then?
Yeah, so effectively, we're doing that so we don't spend the money twice.
Got it.
Now, uh, at the same time, it's not our intention to eliminate these programs, and that's something that I've, uh, talked about with the, uh, Delisa's group, that, hey, remind me two years from now, when I'm forgetting about this, uh, what I did here.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we aren't creating a deficit by doing this and funding something else.
Yeah. And in fact, this improves our, uh, deficit by, uh, shifting off these costs for these two years as we're in an economic recovery mode to the future date where we'd conceivably have a little bit better economy, uh, assuming that the world doesn't turn.
All right, thank you.
All right, we got Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So, I have some concerns as well with 3-1-1. I think this was gonna go to you, Jake. Um, when you, when you mentioned burden of staff, you know, I've talked to some staff members that are concerned that this 3-1-1, which is roughly a million dollars added to this budget, that those staff positions that you can currently call right now, still call right now, um, that those positions, they're, they're concerned that their positions are gonna, uh, be, be removed.
Overall, there are no plans to remove existing positions. Now, one thing that we may do in the future, uh, is consider that with reduced workload, uh, as some retirees, as some employees leave the city through the normal, uh, process of retirement, and, uh, departments reevaluate the workload of new positions, uh, they could move FTEs around, so I no longer need someone who's working the phones. I could have them providing direct services, uh, they could be doing other work effectively, uh, rather than being distracted from, uh, my day job, uh, so to speak, to, uh, tell someone that just called me that, no, um, uh, sorry, you're trying to reach someone at the state of Michigan, not the city of Lansing, here's how I connect you to that service, uh, which is important for us to provide that, uh, information to constituents. It just overall decreases the time spent on administrative, uh, and bureaucratic work towards, uh, actual service to, or more direct service.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, it just seems redundant to me. I mean, you have 3-1-1, you got the different, let's say, public service, all the different departments you can call currently, and then we have Lansing Connect, which still seems to have quite a bit of bugs, uh, to be worked out over, I don't know how many years now we've had that, that program that we keep, you know, uh, pushing our citizens to call. So I mean, so there's definitely, seems like overlapping services that we're doing. I, I just, I just don't get it. I don't understand why we're spending that kind of money to do that. Um, now, now with, uh, Delisa, um, thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate you, uh, you, um, letting us, uh, get in your ear a little bit. Could you please, um, explain like the structure of your department, like the different people that work in your department and what their job duties are? You know, 'cause I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned, or not concerned, but I'm just curious to know, because it does seem like we have a lot of overlapping services going out through the different departments in the city of Lansing. But, um, I hear we're bringing Andrea Crawford back?
Well, um, so in our department, so of course, I'm director, then under me, we have a neighborhood resource coordinator, and we also have an administrative assistant who works for the entire department. Uh, we have the Office of Financial Empowerment, whom we have, uh, Amber Paxton as the department head of that. We, under her, we also have the, um, operations coordinator and the offender success region seven community coordinator. The contract position for Andrea Crawford is for, uh, a grant that we received, and I will let Amber go a little bit more in detail about that.
It's actually very simple. It's a small contract, it's forty-five hundred dollars, and it's for her to keep us from, um, missing deadlines and things before we get this grant administrator position, because when we, when we finally cried uncle and asked for another person, we, we were really worried about getting behind, and because Andy knows the department so well and had some free time, we asked her if she would help. And basically, she's just going through, and she's reading all these, um, contracts we signed with these funders and, and creating an action plan for us so that we can start the year fresh before we put in a person in a position.
Okay, thank you. So, so before Andrea Crawford left the, the city, um, I know that they requested an additional sixty thousand dollars to the budget, and since her position left, what, where's that money, what happened to that money?
So that, that was the neighborhood resource coordinator, and so before Andrea left, that was my position. Um, and, well, I had hired into that position, was in that position for a few months, and then moved into the director position. Prior to that, I was administrative assistant. So, under me, there's two full-time employees, the neighborhood resource coordinator, who is currently Robin Anderson King, and then Kelly Brown, who is our administrative assistant.
She, she moved over from Parks, correct?
Yes.
That's right. All right. Councilman Garza?
Um, I, I think you answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do think, before we get to Councilman Daniels, I think we had a follow-up. Vice President Wood?
Um, yeah, real quick, with, with Andrea Crawford, I, I guess I'm a little concerned about that position. Um, not necessarily what, uh, the person will be doing, but you're taking somebody who was a department head that you will have to oversee, who used to run the department. I'm, I'm concerned about how that will play out within your structure. So I just wanna point that out.
I've actually been having pretty much fun with it.
Pardon?
I've been having fun with it, actually, being in charge of her. But no, we haven't had, we, um, she reports directly to Amber and specifically on that project only, so she's sort of in an intern position. Uh, she does not have to, um, come into the office, so there's no issues with that.
Well, that's a problem that she had before.
Uh, no comment.
Just, I, I'm not asking you to comment.
I understand.
I'm just putting it out there.
I understand, but she does have, uh, it's listed out in the contract as to what she is doing for that project, and it's just for that project only, so don't.
And how long is that supposed to last?
Until June thirtieth.
Pardon?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth?
Correct.
Of next year?
No, ma'am. This year.
This year? Oh, good. Thank you.
We have Councilman Daniels, then Councilman Brown.
All right, thank you, President Hussein. Uh, Jake, so my concern is over the 3-1-1. Um, and the thirty-seven thousand dollars that council would be picking up on this, it just seems, um, and I would never speak for our office manager, um, but it seems like we would literally be paying thirty-seven thousand dollars for somebody to then ha, just forward a call to our office manager to handle all of the things that she already does. Um, so I just think that, that finding a different way, uh, to, to cover that cost is gonna be important, because it seems, um, it seems kind of ridiculous for us to be picking up the tab on that, honestly. Um, our office manager does a phenomenal job, and everything would be going through her, is the way things run here, and so I just think that finding a different way to, uh, pick up that cost, and I understand what you're saying, I just don't think that this is a responsible way to do it on our end.
No, and we're certainly willing to, uh, discuss that allocation. If you have alternative methods you'd like to suggest, we'll review it. I would consider the thirty-seven thousand approximately what would be paid for a part-time employee. At the same time, you're receiving the services of an entire division of approximately seven people, and it wouldn't only be, uh, the work that would be forwarding a call to Sherry Boak, but also the individuals who would be calling Sherry on business that belongs to the public service department or to, uh, the fire department or, uh, building services. And so it would be taking those calls off her plate and sending them directly to where they could be answered, or otherwise answering that themselves if they have the information available. Now, one thing that we want to do in the future, which we don't have the data to do upfront, is that eventually this program will move to a model where it will, uh, not charge based off of any allocation, but on a per-call basis. So once the service is fully activated, I call public service for. So, once the service is fully activated, I call public service for, say, three minutes to resolve a call. Those three minutes will be charged to public service as opposed to my estimate that I created going forward.
All right. Looks like we have a follow-up from Vice President Wood, and then Councilman Brown.
You know, I hate to keep beating a dead horse, but again, 20 years of experience here, we have had some callers, and each one of you have, you know, know some of those constituents, who will call, in fact, I had one today that called five times, which I wasn't taking the call, because I was in meetings, but called five times. So, you're gonna charge me five times for that, that they called 3-1-1 instead of calling here? You're gonna charge us five times for that when you get down to charging per call?
We would have to review the funding model. That is a proposed structure. Now, one, we could move to a model where it's successful calls. So, rather than the five times the individual calls trying to reach you, it's only charging for the time that they successfully completed the service. And it's, I assume it's a one call to City Hall, so they would, it could potentially be a service that they call the individual back once you are available, as opposed to them having to call back until they get a response.
And, and I understand this is an allocation that isn't being taken out of our budget, but was added in. But I also know that last year, we fought to try to add a legislative assistant, that, you know, we didn't get the cooperation from the administration to do that. So, you know, if I'm gonna be asking for additional money from the administration, it would be for a legislative assistant.
Or we take $37,000 for a raise for our two full-time mighty employees that just do an incredible job, and certainly didn't ask necessarily for this to be taken off their plate. That being said, I do have two follow-up questions, I believe, one from Councilman Brown, and one from Councilman Spatafor regarding 3-1-1. Councilman Brown?
I concur with what Councilwoman, thank you, Councilwoman Wood, as well as Councilman Daniels regarding this $37,000 allocation. To you, Jake, it sounds like something has been started, and I guess, you know, a lot of times in business, you know, you say you have to count the cost, and it seems like that what I hear you explaining is that it really hasn't been flushed through. My question would be, when we're talking about the $37,000, you know, where, where did you get that number? How are you calculating these different numbers to say, you know, to say that? So, even you made a comment that there's, you know, eight of us here, so it's taking calls for eight individuals. But, you know, it could be eight people here, but let's say if everyone in Lansing is concerned with potholes, that's what they're calling on. So, how did we calculate that throughout? Additionally, you made a comment saying, well, it's based on call volume, if someone calls City Council, that they could be referred to the fire department, if they were calling with the fire department. Do you have any data, or is that just information that we are just kind of assuming or making up? But we're coming with finite numbers of $37,000, saying we've made these calculations and equations, and it equals this?
Yes, let me back up from that. So, we've, I've discussed several different possibilities for a funding model, whether it's completely general fund funded, whether it's paid by call volume, which we don't have the data to make an accurate projection. Right now, what we're doing is a per capita allocation for departments which are public-facing. And so, this excludes departments which are covered by 911, so our police and fire, 211, the internal auditor, because it's an internal service to the city as opposed to external. And so, to create that per capita number, I didn't want to create something from scratch, so I used the per capita numbers by the IT fund budget. So, very similar to how they are funded is how we're proposing to fund the city 3-1-1 program, but without the equipment cost.
Okay.
Yeah. And another item to correct an earlier statement, there was discussion on a council position to help with the legal side of things. We did create a new position in the current fiscal year, which is a Assistant City Attorney, Council Liaison Position, which is within the OCA budget, and that's a new position in addition to the city attorney.
Thank you for that. You know, I agree with everyone else that, you know, Sherry, we deal with a lot of unique situations. We have a very good team here, and Sherry and her team, you know, do a phenomenal job. Following up quickly, because I know we're on a time, you talked about the staffing. Councilman Garza asked about the staffing in the department, or kind of the organizational structure, and you indicated that you had in the financial office of Financial Empowerment, operations coordinator, and a few other staff?
Yes, so in the Office of Financial Empowerment, we have Amber Paxton, who is the department head for that. Then we have the operations coordinator, and we have the, and he has a very long title, so excuse me, the community coordinator for Region Seven for Offender Success.
So, those, those staff and the operations coordinator, is that for the entire neighborhood and citizens and arts and engagement department, or is that for that Financial Empowerment program? Additionally, when you talk about Amber as the, I heard, I guess, department head, are you the department head?
No, no, not department head. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean it. Here, I'm gonna pass it over to Amber, 'cause she can explain a little bit better how we absorb that, that office.
Okay, thank you.
So, just because I think it'll help everyone understand, when we started the Office of Financial Empowerment, it was part of the mayor's office in 2013 when it launched. And then, when, when there was a change in administration, just before that change in administration, our office was moved to the finance department, and then under this administration, moved into neighborhoods. And so, because I was, it's very much like Bishop Maxwell and the Office of Faith-Based Initiatives, is the OFE, is the Office of Financial Empowerment, not a department. But it needed a department in which to live, and we have found our forever home, because we love being in Department of Neighborhoods. It's exactly the right place. And also, I just want to clarify, especially for the new council members, that the Financial Empowerment Center is a program. The Office of Financial Empowerment is an office that oversees four programs and five grant-funded initiatives. And so, it's really tough to keep those two separated. I want to make sure everyone understood, those, those two staff that work for us, one works for the Offender Success Program, his entire salary is paid by the state. And then the community, I'm sorry, the operations coordinator and myself are the only two staff paid by the city, not by another entity. There's also, though, OFE programs, like the Financial Empowerment Center, which is at Cristo Rey, and like Lansing Save, where we are contributing dollars in a contractual manner to others. And just because I really want y'all to hear this and know where we're coming from on it, it is our intent to be an ideas lab, in which ideas are tried for city residents, and when they are proven successful, then they are sent off to live in their forever home, which is why FVC is at Cristo Rey, and those staff are Cristo Rey employees, not city employees. So, I hope that helps, because it's been very different from the way that other city departments and offices work, and it can get very confusing. So, happy to answer any other questions about it as well.
Thank you for that. So, when Councilman Garza asked about the Department of Neighborhoods, Citizens Engagement and Arts, or Arts and Citizen Engagement, how many, how many staff is what I'm trying to, to get to are operating in the neighborhoods and citizen engagement and arts? So, we understand, and you're talking about a grant administrator, which would be with the financial office of empowerment office, which would not also serve the Department of your department?
Well, at this time, we're, on the neighborhood and citizen engagement side of things, we don't, we're not applying for grants right now. We're, we're, we're not in that realm. If we choose to apply for our grants in the upcoming year, that grant administrator would work on that grant as well.
Okay. I would just encourage that if, you know, if we're looking at adding a grant administrator, that it should, you know, benefit the entire department as well as the office.
It will.
And, you know, move forward. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, we do have two additional council members. Sorry, before we get to Councilmen Spatafor and Councilman Jackson, I want to first say thank you to the folks in the audience that are being patient. We have a number of departmental directors, as well as staff members that are here to present. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate it. I think these are critical questions, and obviously, receiving answers are very important in terms of this process. That being said, I do want to remind folks that we have five additional presentations as well as another discussion action item, and it is 6:21. So, with that being said, Councilman Spatafor.
You sound like me two years ago, Adam. So, I have a couple of questions, no, actually, just a couple of statements. I really do think this is a great program, the 3-1-1. I think 2,192 citizens, residents have had problems solved in the last three and a half months, and this is a huge value add for the community if it's working. I have my own problems with Lansing Connect, and I think everyone around here has the same issues. I also have my own problems with the IT allocation that we've used for years. So, I think what I'm hearing, well, at least what I'm hearing and what I'm choosing to hear, is really good program. I think this body has some work to do in terms of how we're gonna fund it, but I think this, this very, very brief bit of data on a soft launch shows that something's working over there, and it's a good program. And I just want to make sure that at least I clarified that my concerns are not with the efficacy of the program you're running, but rather with the bureaucratic part of it, and we'll figure that out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. I'll try to refrain, but just all the comments on 3-1-1, and since it's in this department. So, if it works, I think it's gonna be a good idea, because we all have our different relationships with our constituents, and Carol's one of the best with hers, and that's probably across the board, from what I hear. But most of the people want, you know, something that I can just unfortunately email Brett, Andy Kilpatrick, chief of police, all the high-level top people, because I don't necessarily know how to navigate Connect and, or know where in the pecking order from LPDs, you know. I do do Captain Deal also. But like Andy Kilpatrick, I don't know who to go to, particularly if someone has a problem with the way that their cement was put back in on their sidewalk. And I don't know in Boardwater and Light necessarily who to go to for sure to, which website to go to to do the streetlight. So, I just do Dick, Pefley, the main guy. So, if it works, I think it's gonna be great. And there's, and it's not gonna take anybody that wants to talk to council. I'm sure on 3-1-1, the operator, if the person like, I want Councilwoman Jackson, I want the city, nope, I want the city council, they're gonna say, okay, and it's gonna go to the city council, and then come to us. So, that's just my thoughts. I wanted to refrain, but everybody has, you know, spoke, so that's just what I'm thinking at this point.
All right. I am not seeing any additional hands, so I do believe we've exhausted our questions. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Yep, absolutely. Next, we are going to bring down, let's see, human resources. We have Ms. Linda Sanchez-Gazella with us. Come on down. Go ahead and take a seat. I would assume the mic's still on, make sure the green light's on. How are you?
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your patience.
So, just as the other two folks have done before you, if you could just go through the questions, provide answers, then we'll, we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, great. First, I want to thank you, President Hussein, and council members for having us here. I'd like to introduce Brian Kaufman, who is payroll and benefit administrator. Part of what he also does is the HR budget, which I appreciate, he monitors. So, I am going to let him answer the questions this evening, without objection. Thank you.
Hello, council. First, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? We identified two things. Increase in salaries generally, as we predict to return to full staffing of positions. Additionally, increases in salaries with the addition of a deputy HR director, an HR specialist, and a health and wellness specialist. Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? There are none. Are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? We don't, we do not have any. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No. We don't have any. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? Again, we, there will be no elimination or combining of positions. Yes, we are budgeting for temporary help with regards to administrative duties to assist hiring, payroll and benefits, and labor relations.
All right, Mr. Kaufman, we appreciate that. Linda, do you have anything to add before we open it up for questions?
No, I don't think so. Our budget is relatively small, but important, so I welcome any questions.
All right. We have questions from the body. Vice President Wood?
Hi, Linda. My only question has to do with the residency incentive program, with the fact that that's been at $25,000, and with the vacant, the number of vacant positions that we've got, do you see this helping in any way to attract employees in with the residency program? And have you been able to utilize those funds to the fullest extent?
First of all, I do think it's a very beneficial program for our employees. I think we're getting the word out to employees that it is there, and we have used, I'd have to defer to Brian, but I have signed several requests for the applications for people who are buying houses in, in Lansing. I actually would like to see if we could expand it in some way.
That's my thought.
Yes, to create more of an incentive for homes to be bought in Lansing.
And this is still where, if they leave within five years, they have to pay back? There's so much deducted each year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Again, with the cost of housing having gone up the way it has, $5,000 is a drop, drop in the bucket nowadays. And it's my understanding, you can't apply for that as well. You cannot, if you utilize these dollars, you can't get the dollars through the planning department with those. Is that, and I think that's $10,000.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. It's either or.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have other questions? Seeing none, very quickly, how many, Linda, how many staff members do you have in HR right now?
How many do I have?
Including vacancies?
There's, including the vacancies, I would say there's probably, no, I was gonna say 13, but Brian is telling me 11.
13, and we have north of 800 employees in the city of Lansing. What's best practice in terms of number of employees in HR supporting, let's say, per 100 employees of any, I mean, there's gotta be something out there, correct? It just seems like we, to be honest with you, it seems like your department, in my opinion, is actually woefully underfunded.
Is actually what? I'm sorry.
Woefully underfunded.
Well, yes. I believe that we're underfunded for the number of employees that we do have.
Yeah.
And there's numbers that I've heard out, you know, 832, that doesn't include the seasonal. Do you know how many employees we have right off?
I mean, you know, we, grand total, like 1,084, give or take, 1,050. You know, again, including seasonals, PEA's, contract workers.
And with the addition of one hiring specialist, that will bring us to, how many hiring specialists?
Four specialists. Currently, I have four, so it would bring me up to five.
Okay.
But that would include the recruiter position too, so.
And I would assume the way that works is you actually have hiring specialists, so you have certain departments that are assigned to, or I should say, hiring specialists assigned to certain departments.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And remember, I've invited you all in to come and meet the hiring specialist, something that I think would be beneficial for all of you to understand how, how we hire from beginning to end.
We appreciate that. Yeah, we really do. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks so much. We appreciate you two being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, good one. All right, that brings us to public services. We do have our director, Andrew Kilpatrick, with us. We certainly appreciate him being here. So, come on down. How's it going, Andrew?
We're doing well. It's good to see you. We're gonna go ahead and turn over the floor. Go for it.
All right. So, I guess I will get to the questions first, and then I'll, you know, or your questions, I will provide responses to those, and then I'm sure you have others. But as far as the difference between this budget, the proposed budget, and last year's, the only real operational difference is that we have added about $57,000 for sustainability efforts. the only real operational difference is that we have added about $57,000 for sustainability efforts. That is something new to this budget. That is not the largest dollar change. You'll see if you go through the various funds, there are significant changes there. The, the big kind of change in philosophy is on the fleet side. So with fleet, we are trying to take an approach where we allocate those costs to the departments who actually have the vehicles. So we look at what the, the maintenance expenses had been over the last several years and what the replacement cycle should be and the cost of those. Allocate that to the department, and then the departments will also pay their own fuel costs. So in that way, departments are able to make their own decisions on their vehicles. And if they look at that cost and think it's too high, then they can look at what changes there might be. In the past, that is not, was not the case. In the past, what we did is we had an amount of money for vehicle purchases, and then fleet services just did kind of the best they could to figure out which vehicles needed to be replaced. So that is something that we're still trying to figure out. The other thing that changes is that in the past, long time ago, we actually had a fund that when a vehicle got crashed, we bought a new vehicle from that fund. That's no longer there. That is actually rolled into the allocation for the department based on the type of vehicle they had and what the kind of crash experience had been for that type of vehicle. So that is kind of a philosophical change, and we'll kind of work through that over the next couple of years. I will say that since we turned in the budget, gas prices have gone up, so probably our fuel amount is, may not be adequate if fuel prices stay high. But this, that was the best information we had at the time when we put those through, so that's something we'll, we'll look at going through. We also have some significant capital projects at the wastewater plant. So I think all of you are familiar with the CSO program and the expenditures, kind of the mandate we have to do there. But because of that, we haven't been spending a lot of money at the plant itself. And there are some significant capital needs at the plant also that many of them will pay for themselves, or at least partially pay for themselves through increased efficiency or decreased energy. So that's something that's, you know, kind of new to this year's budget, and we can obviously talk about those now or when the time is right on individual projects. And then the other cost we have would be, we've already discussed 3-1-1. Obviously, there are a lot of calls that come to public service, and so a portion of that does get allocated to our department. So that's something that's, that's new in our budget this year. Any changes in services that your department is responsible for? Not in this year. No, we don't have any changes. We've talked a lot about, you know, yard waste and trash and recycling, and so those are things that we might bring to council in the future, but that is not in this year's budget. Rate or fee increases? We basically have inflationary increases each year that we bring to council. So on the trash side and the recycling yard waste fee, that is approximately $2. So $2 per quarter on the trash side and $2 per year on the recycling yard waste side. And then on the sewer side, we're proposing a 4% rate increase, and those have historically been 3% to 4%, and that is really to fund the CSO program. That's kind of why our rates are, are increasing a little bit more or just above inflation. To continue to get SRF loans, we do have to, there's an affordability index, so we have to look at what that burden would be on our residents, and we are keeping within that with those rate increases. Major equipment purchases, primarily, we're just talking about vehicles. So that is in our budget. We are proposing to double the amount that we have for vehicle purchases from $1.5 to $3 million this coming year. And in addition, there are some departments that are now paying for them direct. So this will be the first year that you would see them in the recycling budget, recycling yard waste, and then also in the trash budget. As enterprise funds now, they are purchasing their vehicles as opposed to essentially paying a rental rate. So they will be able to determine that, so it's just from one line to another. So you might see the rental rate go down on the equipment side or the capital side that will increase. Any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions? So our position numbers this year went from 229 down to 227. There was a technician position at the wastewater plant that was vacant, and that is, is being eliminated from the budget. And then another one on the, in the engineering division that is also being eliminated, another vacant position. On the engineering side, we have a bunch of other changes, restructuring. So kind of the net of that, that loss will be taken care of, but it will be a loss in the position for this year. And I think that's the question, or the responses to those questions.
All right. We appreciate it. Are there questions? Councilman Garza, then Vice President Wood?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick, for being here tonight and discussing the budget and fielding our questions. With the CSO project, are we on schedule with that, or are we behind schedule?
Depends on what you're talking about. If you want to say like the original schedule, we're behind. But we negotiated with the state, with Eagle, and have an administrative consent order. And right now, we basically are on schedule to meet those, those goals. We will be updating that five-year plan this fall, and with that, we will have then a set of, of projects for the upcoming five years. But the goal with that, I think we have to be 95% of the overflows eliminated by 2032, and then it's a little more flexible on, after that. But between 2035 and 2038, all of that will be done. And then that's combined sewer overflows, but then we have a mandate to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows as well. So that would be backing up into people's basements. So that will be a whole nother program, but we'll, we'll follow up and do some of it at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Now, I guess, first off, I'm, I'm glad to see that on the upcoming, this upcoming year of, of construction projects, we're getting some attention to some of my streets and my wards, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Not because you're asking the question, but I was just, you know.
No, I, I know. I see it, I see it's on the, I see it's on the agenda, so. But there's some concerns on Devonshire. I know that they're replacing some, I think, sanitary and some consumers' lines.
So consumers, yeah, consumers came first. They did their gas line replacement. And then so combined with sewers and water main, Alpha, Devonshire, and Trantor down there, that's going on right now.
Okay, so, so the concerns that I'm hearing is that when they dug up the sidewalks for the consumers, that they replaced them with gravel and some with asphalt. Do you plan on having a contractor come in and actually put cement in it?
Yes, yes. So any, any of those that were kind of replaced temporarily, some of those were because we were also going to be taking them out, and it didn't make sense for them to put them in and then take them back out. The majority of what consumers did last year, they replaced in concrete knowing it would be sacrificial, and we were going to take it back out. But all we required of them is that it would be accessible, so it'd meet ADA standards by the end of the season. So asphalt going back as a temporary measure was acceptable. Concrete was also acceptable. Gravel over the winter would not be acceptable, so if there were areas where you knew that took place, let me know. But up to the end of the construction season, we were allowing them to have packed gravel that you could go across.
Yeah, there is some actually from Devonshire still. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Vice President Wood, Councilman Daniels, and then Councilman Jackson?
My first question is to Jake. I, I know you made the correction in the fees for the trash. Was there a correction that needed to be made in the revenues on that? Or was that just an error in the fee structure?
Yeah, that was a transcription error from request form into the final document.
Okay, so there was no need to adjust the revenues?
No.
All right. Next, Andy, do we have the, did we purchase sidewalk equipment that did the leveling of the sidewalk? I know we had hired people to do that.
We hired that. It's proprietary equipment, so we thought it's more cost-effective to just have this company come out and do that. We could look at that, but I think we would have to be licensed, and I'm not sure if they would do that to a government.
So we, because there was some misunderstanding, someone had thought that we had purchased the equipment, and I didn't think we had.
No, ma'am. We do have a grinder, so we can go out and grind sidewalk, but that does not leave the same result, and it's, you know, it takes us more time to do that, and it's not nearly as smooth. So most of the time, what we will do is we will just have that cut. If it meets certain parameters, we can't cut, you know, if it's heaved by three or four inches, we can't cut that. Then it has to be wedged, and the wedge is also temporary until we're able to come back and do a project. But the cutting is all done by a company.
Okay. Then you had mentioned the vehicles. Does that include fire for fire engines and ambulances? Is that now in their budget, or is that still part of the fleet?
So that, so what, sorry, clarification there. It would be the enterprise funds that we have. So trash recycling, yard waste, parking, and wastewater, including the O and M vehicles that are used for wastewater purposes. Those funds are purchased directly. Otherwise, it is still purchased by fleet. But what we do is we look at what the actual cost is, and we allocate the cost of the replacement cycle for the purchase of those vehicles, plus what the maintenance has been to the budget as, as the rental. So that is rental rate that includes all the replacement, other than fuel. Fuel is paid directly by the, the user.
Is there someone that's trying to purchase wastewater or wants to contract and take over wastewater?
No. We have currently, you're aware of the study that Johnson Controls had done for general fund buildings and some other buildings. They are doing a study out at wastewater, looking at process improvement efficiencies for some of our processes out there. They are also looking at that with, if we improve the processes, what an ideal staffing model would be out there. But they are not proposing a, you know, takeover of the wastewater plant. The Board of Water and Light is also doing a study of wastewater, looking at increased partnership opportunities with the city, and that's mostly because they are ramping up their water main replacement from two to eight miles a year. And with that, we do sewer projects at the same time.
So there isn't an individual who's made an offer to the city for that?
No.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Daniels, and then Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, President Hussein. Thank you for coming down today. A quick que, I have a couple of questions. First, the major street fund and local street funds, could you just explain those?
Yes. So major street fund and local street, these are designations with Act 51, our revenue source from the state. So they designate different types of streets, and we get different funding. It's on a per, per mile basis, and so in per mile of road, we get more for our major streets than we do for our local streets. So we have about 107 miles or so of major streets in the city, and the remaining 300-plus miles are local streets. So basically, neighborhood streets are the local streets, and the major streets are generally the multi-lane ones that are busier.
So on the 9.9% decrease on local streets, is that going to affect repair on the streets or sidewalks?
Anytime there is a funding decrease, it could affect it. So what's important to understand with all these funds is for a long period of time, our major street fund was subsidizing our local street fund. So you would see a significant transfer between major streets and local streets. This year, what is being proposed is that we are still having a transfer, but the ending fund balance of major streets would end about where it is now, and local street funding would still go down to, I think it went from like 1.2 million to like 400,000 or so in, in fund balance. So we're getting close to the point where as if we kept spending the way we did, we would have no fund balance to draw from on the local street side. Now, we do still have a fairly healthy balance on the major street side, and that is something that we could increase on the local street side and decrease that major street balance, but we're not able really to decrease the local street balance much more.
Okay, now, I apologize if I'm incorrect. If I'm reading this correctly, does this say that you're going to be paying, what, 383,000 for 3-1-1? So people will be able to call you guys and say, "I have these issues," or call 3-1-1, "I have these issues. I need these things fixed," or use that to connect, but they actually aren't going to get the same amount of service because it's being decreased.
So with 3-1-1, many of the calls that were going to the department now are being handled by 3-1-1. There are still calls that are being transferred, but on the seventh floor, all of our calls now are going directly to 3-1-1. Unless they are calling directly to an individual in our department, they know that number. And then the intent is also to do that with the majority of the kind of general calls to operations and maintenance where we have our, our folks down there. And then long-term, we can look at utilization of those employees to see if there's a way that they could be better utilized than answering calls.
Yeah, ultimately, I guess that's my question, is, is do you feel like 3-1-1 makes your department more efficient?
I think ultimately, if residents are able to call one location and get their, their call or their question answered, yes. I think it will take a little while before that's able to get out to people so they know that they can call and get answers, because now, a lot of times what will happen is they will call, sometimes our office. Then they don't like that. They go and call O and M. They don't like that answer. They will call, whether it's the mayor's office or council or another department. And with 3-1-1, that's, that's really where they're, they're going, and they aren't calling anywhere else unless that call cannot be answered at 3-1. So I think ultimately, yes, it should help in efficiency. I think it's a little too early for the rollout right now to know exactly what efficiencies will be gained.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. You mentioned sustainability efforts. Can you explain what you mean by that? And I didn't see it in the paper copy I have.
Okay.
I'm not sure. So if you could explain what the expectations are, maybe like a quick job description if it's a job, and then what, and what you hope to achieve.
Right. So the city has a sustainability manager, Lori Welch, but she did not, or her operation did not have any, any budget to work with. So in this year's budget, we have in, I think there are four accounts, a total of about $57,000. So that would be, you know, memberships, events, other things in the city's sustainability plan that she would be able to use those funds for. I think right now, it's early because there was no budget, so we don't know exactly what those funds would be spent on. But prior to this, those funds were in the, the administration portion of the public service budget. And so we kind of moved these, so there would be a budget specifically for sustainability efforts for the city.
Thank you. I think, and I had her in committee, I think she has things that she knows that she wants.
I'm sure there are. I just can't speak specifically to what those would be and how much she would want to have, and this might not meet that, but I told her I would put something in there, and there is something in there, and actually, budget, they add more than I asked, so I guess, you know, thanks for that.
Okay. And I mean, I, I assume you consulted with her about, you know, different things?
I, I did, and I know there is a sustainability plan, and she put together a list of items that she would like to have funding for, but I can't speak specifically to, you know, to what those are and the dollar amounts for each of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Seeing none, thanks so much, Mr. Kilpatrick. We appreciate it. We are now going to bring down Mr. Brett Koschinsky, who is the Director of our Parks and Recreation Department. As with everyone, we certainly appreciate your patience tonight. How's it going, Brett?
Good.
Good. It's good to see you. You want to go ahead and run down the questions, provide us some answers, and then we'll open it up for question and answers from the body?
Sure. So we'll start with what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? I would have council members turn to page 101 of their budget book, which is the capital improvement funds. This is where you'll see the most changes in terms of last year to this year. So at the top portion of that, you will see the subsidies, which are the cemetery subsidy and golf subsidy, and also our kids camp. Under the capital projects, you'll see grant match again. In terms of the park paving projects, we are looking at Guyer and Davis for those. In terms of the playground renovations, I'll just run through those by Ward. So Ward 1, Walsh, River Point, Oak Park. Ward 2, Waldo, Tammany, and Clifford. Ward 3, Hillborn, Ingham, and probably the Alfreda Schmidt Center. And then Ward 4, Comstock, Hall Court, and Dunabek. So those are the playgrounds that we are looking to get renovated this year. I will tell you this, the timeline of getting the supplies here and everything is going to be tight, but those are the first ones on the list. We are also, as you know, doing a playground at Riverfront Park, which will be the universally accessible playground there, so that will be a destination playground. We're also looking at creating those destination playgrounds in all of our wards. Will they be to the level that it would be in Riverfront Park? No, but we are looking at putting more money into some of the parks in each ward, making those more destination parks. So for instance, Washington Park in the middle of the city, we are looking for that to be more of a destination playground, and we would spend more money there. At the, at the community centers where we have our programs and summer programs, for instance, making more of an investment in the playgrounds at those locations. So that is something to look forward to this year in terms of the playground renovations. Washington Park, we're going to be moving that pavilion closer to the parking areas. Washington Park, we're going to be moving that pavilion closer to the parking areas there. So that, right now, that park pavilion is underwater, and it's a long way from the parking lot. So we are looking to make those changes, and we also have some issues with the pavilion there. You will see tree planting and looking to implement a residential tree planting program. This is something that, not only in the parks, but also something where residents can be able to place those between the sidewalk and the boulevard, and quite possibly, if it doesn't work in the sidewalk, for that to be placed in their front yard area. So you will see that in there as well. Foster Park, this is a, we did partial funding of this in previous budget years, so you will see that added there as well, fully funding that along with Fulton Park, the overlook there. And then the cemetery repairs, that is for some access drives within Evergreen Cemetery. And I can tell you, that is very much needed, especially during these wet weather events that we're having. So it creates a lot of issues for us there. So that would be question number one. Really, we are looking to, in terms of previous fiscal years to current fiscal year, we're looking to get back to our pre-pandemic numbers of staffing and programs out there. So the budget will be reflecting more of our pre-pandemic numbers than it did over the past two years there. Any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? No changes there. Fee increases, we go to page 120 of your budget book. You will see our fee increases, there are new fees there. I won't go through every one of them unless you have questions on them, but you will see some cemetery fee increases there regarding our overtime funds and regarding especially, there's a new fee in there for the use of the propane. When we have to thaw the soil out, you will see that for both a full burial and cremation burial there. So we have a number of fees with the cemeteries that will be increasing. Also at the Alfreda Schmidt Center, some of the gym rentals there and the rummage sale that takes place at the Alfreda Schmidt Center, and then the aquatics program. You'll see several of those, including a charge for the lap swim, which we have had in the past. And then eliminated, we are instituting that again there. And then finally, you will see our sports increases in fees for some of the sports programs there, as well as the ball field rental fees for individual, or for teams, excuse me, that are going to be using the ball fields there. So those are the fee increases that we have for this year. Any major equipment purchases? I mean, I just went over all of the playgrounds, so I think that's the major one that we're looking at there. There is a possibility of us purchasing some new equipment for our forestry division as far as chipper truck and brush chipper for that. Then, any eliminating, combining, contracting of positions in your budget? Nothing new. I believe council has all of that, because we have a number of contracts with a number of organizations out there. But there is no changes in that from previous years to this year.
Thanks so much. Do we have any questions from council members? Councilman Garza, Councilman Daniels, and then Vice President Wood.
Thank you, Council President Hussein. Thanks for being here, Mr. Koszinski. So I just wanted, I guess, I got a couple of questions and some clarification here. So I noticed you were looking at me when you said Washington Park. Now, and you, okay, all right, just making sure that's not my ward, it's just adjacent to it. But I wanted to make sure, because you said, because you said destination, I just don't want mine to get skipped out, you know?
No, 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 no. What we do know, however, is that Washington Park is really dead center of the city when we're taking a look at that. So I think it does affect all wards, but yes, pardon my glance your way.
Hey, don't mind me looking at me, I just want to make sure that my ward doesn't get skipped. Two, I think you said Waldo, Tammany, and Clifford for Ward 2? Or did I miss the last one not being Clifford?
Correct, I got Waldo, Tammany, and Clifford.
Okay, Clifford isn't my ward either.
Then I'll find you another one, but I'm going to split this, write down every one of your wards, so we have equal amounts in each ward. So yeah, Clifford's getting the pull then.
Just adjacent, it's a little bit out of my board.
Little bit. I'll find you one, we got plenty to choose from.
Appreciate it. Okay, so speaking of those, I've got two more in my ward. Poxon, and I know I mentioned this, and you know, somebody went through and terrorized the park, you know, with some four-by-fours or whatever they did, but there is some concerns, because there's some pretty deep ruts. It was wet, right next to that rock climbing wall, kids jumping off of it, the parents are afraid, you know, they're going to break their ankle or something coming. Do you plan on fixing those ruts, or is that something that just gets healed on its own?
It won't heal on its own.
I don't think so.
I can answer that. But yes, we are going to get out there. The problem is, right now, when we're talking about the weather and being able to do that. So we have lawn mowing starting up some of the parks this week. All of the parks will be going beginning next week. But we have damage there, we have damage at a number of parks, I can go through them. St. Joe, St. Joe, damage. We've got some up on the north end as well. So we will be getting around, because there was a number of areas where there were vehicles that either went out there during the snow or great days like this, and we got a number of ruts out there. So we're going to be taking care of those as soon as we're able to get the equipment on there to do that.
All right, I appreciate it. I'm not trying to take up any more time, just one more quick question. I know I talked to you about Blue Bell Park and the asphalt. So obviously, they said that they wanted it removed. Is that something that you plan on doing this year?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it?
Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. Evening, Brett. So a couple of questions. One, you said you were looking to get your seasonal staff levels back to pre-COVID. Were you able to, I guess, how's recruiting going with that?
So we've got a number of things that we did with that. One of the, probably the major thing that we did was we appealed to the state of Michigan in regards to our camp licensing, because the rules used to be you could only have adults, meaning 18, over 18, 18 or over, supervising kids. So we appealed to have a 1 to 18 ratio instead of our 1 to 10. But within that 1 to 18 ratio, 16 and 17-year-olds would be allowed to be leaders within that. So that was accepted by them. So it does a number of things for us. It allows us to build a bench, which we find is our number one source of employment, is those that have grown up in the community centers or grown up in the camp program to give back. So that's going to allow us, and we now have, and I encourage folks, especially if they're looking for that position and they are not 18, this allows individuals at 16 or 17 to be able to apply for those positions. So that's a key component for us. How is recruiting going? I feel that we will still say to parents this year, we do not have enough counselors for your kids. And that's tough. I didn't ever want to do that, but I think we're at that point. There's been at times where we've been full at a certain center, and you've had to go to another community center or not get the week you wanted at Foster Community Center, for instance. But this is different. So we are only taking residents. We used to have non-residents as well, we're not doing that this year. But yeah, we need council members, we need everybody in this room, everybody that's out there. We all know about that experience that we had during the summer and what it means to kids for that camp experience. And we need counselors to be able to provide that. So yeah, we're looking for people.
Perfect, thank you. Next, you know, I didn't see it in this, but you and I have had conversations before about solar lighting in parks. And I'm wondering, one, you know, in regards to Bancroft Park, whether or not you've been able to work with the Friends of Bancroft Park and make progress on a plan for Bancroft Park, as well as with any of the renovations you're trying to do on parks. Are you trying to incorporate any solar lighting? Or only because with the blue sky prevention that you did in Bancroft Park to prevent, protect the trees, you ran into the lighting issue that you have there? So I guess, what's the plan moving forward? And are you going to try to incorporate any sort of solar lighting, you know, to protect the environment and the trees?
With regards to Bancroft Park, we have, we are meeting with the Friends of Bancroft Park. There was a change in leadership in that. Glenn Lopez is the president, I know Glenn very well, and working with Glenn on those issues, and as well as Park Board is working on that. So as far as whether there are solar lights, or whether they hook onto the building there, where they go. As you know, we have residents on that road there, just to the west of Bancroft Park, that are thankful that the lights aren't in. So we have to work with the neighborhoods there, we have to work with the Park Board as well, and come up with a solution that will work for everyone.
Perfect, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Before I get to Vice President Wood, if you are just tuning in, you're at home and you're tuning in, we are still in the committee of the whole, we are very, very close to completing our agenda. What we will, I'm sorry, what we will do then is adjourn for five minutes and then start our regularly scheduled city council meeting, probably closer to 7:15, 7:20. That being said, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Couple of questions. Brett, on the golf fund, my understanding was, you know, part of reducing our subsidy for that had to do with the fact that we were having the Lansing Center take over management of that. Has that decreased as proposed, or is it the same?
No, if you look back previous budget years to where we're at now, we're at $100,000 subsidy, and that continues to drop. We were up over close to a half a million dollar subsidy previously. So I think those are the answers as far as that. We had great years there, especially during COVID, and that has continued. So we're very happy with the progress that is taking place at Grosseback.
Okay. And you're talking about tree planting. I'm going to assume that if, as a resident, I can't put a tree in the right-of-way and choose to have it put in my front yard, then I take on the responsibility of tree trimming?
That would be correct. Again, we need to fully flush out that program. I think you mentioned a little bit about planting it too. You know, if you're not able to plant that, we're looking to have neighborhoods and those groups help out with, similar to what we do for people with snow shoveling or whatever, is help your neighbor out in those cases. But yes, in terms of what we would be responsible for with trimming, and our forestry group is going out there with placement of trees on this, because not every tree is right for the area. So that's something that our forestry supervisors will be working with the residents as far as proper species for the location.
I get that, but one of the things I think that is going to be critical is the education piece for someone that says, oh yeah, I want a tree, and then not aware that there's going to be a responsibility. A couple of things, watering, as well as the potential of in the future, having to pay to have that tree trimmed.
With every tree that we plant, there is a information that is given to that homeowner in regards to planting the tree and care for the tree. And this will, in terms of the trimming of the tree, that will be added to it as well. But there is information that we currently give regarding each tree that is planted in front of individuals' houses for how to properly care for that tree.
And I understand that, but again, when we look at the turnover of people living in houses and, you know, somebody else buying it, and assuming that that was a city tree, I don't have to worry about that. We have to make sure that, you know, whether we're putting it on the website, whatever we're doing, we're making sure that we're trying to get that information out there as much as possible. And then my other question would be real quick. Right now, the city, if a tree raises the sidewalk because of the root system in the right-of-way, then it's split between the homeowner and the city for the replacement of that patch of sidewalk. If I have the tree in my yard and it does the same thing, then I'm going to assume I'm going to have to pay 100%?
I would assume that as well.
Then my last question has to do with, I didn't hear anything about Morris Park. Poole?
That's correct, you did not hear anything about Morris Park. We are awaiting information back from the committee. One of the things that they are looking at is more money for a study that would actually give them the construction documents. So if you remember, we did an analysis that got us about 30% completion, which gave us that estimate of $4 to $6 million. This would be going back, and the proposal from the committee is to go back to that company for actual construction documents that can be submitted for grants, et cetera. So I would expect that this body would be hearing from the Friends of Morris Park Pool in regards to that.
Okay, thank you.
I believe the last individual is Councilman Jackson. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Councilman Jackson, then Councilman Spatterford.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick, but our budget reflects our priorities. And ever since 2018, when I read the International Panel on Climate Change's 1.5 report, my priorities shifted a little bit. And now that you hear that local governments are now supposed to be making these improvements, I feel a little more empowered to keep talking about it. And just for those who don't know, the 1.5 report says that if we don't do something quick, we're doomed, and everything points to that. So even like the playground equipment, we need playgrounds. I take my kids to all of them, just about, we bike there, it's a great time. So $3,074,000, that's a lot, that's great. But when you compare that to the previous speaker, $57,000 for sustainability efforts, that's just how I look at it. And then also, we have our cemeteries, which our total expenditures is almost $1 million. Loretta, sorry, I love you too. It's just that, you know, our priorities are reflected in that. So when you're at the table, do you think about that, and do you even have any say about how it all goes down?
So when I'm at the table, the first thing I do is take a look at our mission. And our mission is to provide things that aren't otherwise available to Lansing residents. It's a little bigger than that, but I summed it up for you. And so we need to take a look at how we serve all areas of the city, how we serve the very diverse recreational opportunities that people expect, whether it's cemetery services, playgrounds for youth, senior services, services for individuals with disabilities, we need to check all of those boxes. And so that's really what we look at when we put together our budget. We don't forget people's dogs, you know, we have dog parks and put out stuff for dog-friendly parks as well. So it's really taking a look at all of that. Yes, we're aware of the issues that have taken place regarding trees. Not only with after the storm, as far as the, when I'm talking storm, I'm talking the ice storm, and as far as the tree trimming efforts that took place there, after Emerald Ash Bore, now going through trying to survive the oak wilt disease out there, we need to take a look at our trees. So that's a big issue for us as far as sustainability, and taking a look at how that can be in all places and still cool this city, cool the asphalt that's there along the streets, et cetera. So yeah, it's fun to take a look at our department and how we can serve all of those needs. And I think, you know, we also take a look at our five-year master plan and how we incorporate that within the budget. that within the budget. One of the things you do not see much on here as far as city budget is our River Trail. So that's because we have received over $13 million from our Ingham County Parks and Trails Village and that's also where we apply for a lot of state grant funding for. So we're able to check that box by a lot of other grants that we submit to other, other areas of funding.
Thank you, and I appreciate the trees. That is a major thing. And I'd only mention the playground repair because, you know, if we don't have a future, then, you know, our kids playing is just a thing. Stuff I think about, but I appreciate you.
I will add that we have 70-plus playgrounds. You know, we just listed three in each ward. We've got a long way to go to get, many of those are 20-plus years old. So yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna take us a while to get to 70 playgrounds.
And in terms of the 12 that you spoke to before I get to Councilman Spatafor, is that repair, is that replacement, is that kind of a combination thereof? What are we looking at?
No, we're looking at replacement of these. All of these have been into an age point, many of them. When you call, unfortunately, it's not like your Pontiac where you can still get Pontiac parts. We call on some of these playgrounds and they're like, we don't have that part anymore. So my choice is rip it out or try and manufacture something that still fits within the playground safety guidelines. So you're looking at removal on these, with the exception of the Alfreda Schmidt, which would be a brand new. So there may be items within that playground such as the swings or a spinner that may stay, but the main portion of all of those playgrounds that we listed, replacement.
I just want to say thank you for, you know, obviously the commitment, commitment, sorry, of the board, but also your commitment to playgrounds and other recreational opportunities within our parks. When you take a look at, you know, whatever, we had 111 parks now. So many of those are positioned in communities where there really are, you know, there's kind of a dearth of, as an example, fitness facilities. And so they provide really unique opportunities for our seniors, for our youth, for et cetera, to get out and to get moving. And so I certainly want to underscore the importance of opportunities such as playgrounds and things of that nature in our neighborhoods. Councilman Spatafor?
No, I was gonna thank you, one, for making sure that all the playgrounds were in my wards. Very much appreciated. I learned tonight that Pontiac was a car brand. I forgot about that. Thank you very much. Have we always used the Parks Village to subsidize the cemetery? I mean, it looks like 18% of the Parks Village is subsidizing cemetery operations. And is that number historically around $450,000 or has that changed? And maybe you can answer.
It's actually been higher.
It's been higher in the past?
Yeah. So in terms of historical, I would need to go back, but I can safely say, since I have been director in 2011, it's been that way.
Thank you. And you mentioned trails, only because I, it's impacting my commute to work now that 496 is under construction. When's the Francis Park Trail Extension going to be finished? The neighbors are asking too. Don't make me tell Liz Boyd, it's not going to be done. I'm going to send you on that mission.
It should have been done already. So we are on borrowed time. I recognize that and I apologize to those residents in that area. I would say we should be cutting a ribbon in June.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
You get to tell Liz.
All right. Seeing no other questions, we appreciate you being here, Brett. Thanks so much. That brings us to our, let's see, HRCS or Human Relations and Community Services Department. I did see Kim out there. I believe that we have some additional staff members. Good to see you guys go and come on down into the well. For folks that are viewing from home, we are still in our Committee of the Whole meeting. I am not going to try to project a starting time for our city council meeting because I think our last projection was 7:15 and it is now 7:16. So we do have two additional department presentations and then with the blessing of my council colleagues, I think what we're going to look to do is to move item 7E, which is a resolution ballot proposal, Act 2, 2022, to our next Committee of the Whole meeting, which would be May 9th. We still have time to get that submitted to the state. So again, with your blessing, we'll remove that due to time. So that being said, Kim, how are you doing? It's good to see you. All right. You have the floor. Is the green light on? Okay, make sure that.
All right. Good evening.
Now we can hear you. All right.
Mr. Chair and council members, we, it is our pleasure to be here with you this evening to talk a little bit about budget. Joining me here is Kim Dunbar. She helps me manage budget and develop budget for our department and so she'll be helping with the presentation.
Good evening. I will start with the five questions. Question number one, is there a difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? No, there's no major changes. Question number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for and if so, why? No, no major, no services, no changes in services. Number three, are there any rate or fee increases and if so, why? No, no rate or fee increases. Number four, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No equipment purchases proposed. And number five, are there any eliminating, combining or contracting of positions in your budget and if so, provide specifics? No changes there either.
All right. That was succinct. Director Coleman, do you have anything to add?
Nope, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Fantastic. All right. Do we have questions from the body? Councilman Garza?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So good evening. Thanks for being here. Sorry, we've been asked a lot of questions and we're trying to move through this. I just got a question. Is there like a standard or a practice of how you allocate funds to different organizations? And if not, is there any way to make sure that whatever community organization may be reaching out for years and have not received funds, that they end up getting to receive those funds?
Yes, sir. There is a standard and a practice that's used. I believe it was included in our ordinance when I first arrived here in, oh, 2020. And part of that is that it is, they're collected, there's a scoring process and it goes to the HRCS board for scoring and recommendations.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman, oh, sorry, did you have a follow-up? Councilman Garza?
Sure. Okay. So I guess, and I'm aware of that and I appreciate that. I just, I guess I'm just concerned, I mean, because if there's a scoring process, I mean, is there any outreach back to those organizations to say how you may improve their scoring so that they receive funding some way down the road?
I must say, prior to now, we probably did a lot more of that than we do now, that we have a new process. We're still trying to get our arms around it because we actually just got the ordinance approved last year. And so this will be our first real round using the ordinance, but we are looking at doing technical assistance with some of the agencies in this upcoming year to help them with their applications, but also with their goal setting and all the other pieces that are, that come into play with, with approval.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that's an equitable process.
All right. We have Councilman Daniels and then Councilman Brown.
Hi. Good evening.
Hi.
I'm wondering about the Holy Cross overnight shelter. And I, I guess my understanding was it was going to close or is going to be closing? And if so, like what's the plan as far as Advent House taking over? Is that something that you can speak on at all?
I really can't. I don't know anything about them closing nor Advent House taking over their services. I am meeting with the Director of Holy Cross just to be updated and to share information and to talk about how and rather than that, we can provide additional support. But other than that, I don't know anything about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Councilman Hussein. Hello, hello. Good to see everybody. As a former HRCS advisory board member, I always, it's always good to see you all. I had a little bit of an echo to Councilman Daniel's concern. He just spoke about the Holy Cross. I, I think that what he was alluding to is that the former services, I know that they do multiple services, were discontinued, it seemed abruptly, I believe, at the beginning of, or at the end of last year. And so we noticed that, or I noticed that they are receiving additional funding again. Do we have, I know you said you're meeting with them regarding the shelter, but as far as their services or their protocols, have you looked into that? What is, what does HRCS do when you have a challenging provider? When you have, you know, people applying multiple years? I know that you have a, I guess administrative requirements that you, you make sure that quarterly they're, they're providing data. But what about the quality or the actual, you know, service when there's a challenge like this? It's very concerning to see, you know, that we have, you know, agencies who seem to have left our most vulnerable population in the middle of winter with a 30-day notice.
Yeah, and if I could just very quickly interject and maybe Mrs. DeSessa could at some point weigh in. So we actually have, just so you know, Director Coleman, we have a resolution for action tonight. It deals with a budget amendment and it pertains to the Advent House Outreach Drop-In Center. And our understanding, at least the way it was communicated to us, is that we are actually going to look to sublease that location and that contract with Advent to actually continue to provide the services that Holy Cross once did. So that's what we're speaking about. So I'm not certain as to why there's the confusion because again, this is on our agenda tonight for action.
Can I, can I help provide some clarity?
Please do.
Yeah, it's not Holy Cross, it's the City Rescue Mission, who was providing services out of the Outreach, Outreach Center and I believe the address is 601 North Larch. And they were providing day drop-in and overnight drop-in. And unfortunately, they announced their closing of the drop-in center in March and we recognized the gap in services and we're hoping that we could help them or help pick up those services by providing the overnight drop-in for those people who are most vulnerable and out at nighttime. But that had nothing to do with Holy Cross.
Nope. I appreciate that. I think we just mixed the two up. Thanks so much.
And Mr. Brown, your question?
Yes, my question remains the same.
Now I gotta remember it.
Okay. No problem, no problem. So, so looking at the general funds listing here and Councilman Garza asked the question about the process, my question is that I do see Holy Cross here based on services that was discontinued abruptly in the middle of winter for individuals who are seeking housing. And so now we see that they're applied for grants and it looks like they're being reallocated funds again. And so that's, that's concerning. So if you could speak on that a bit, we would appreciate it.
Sure. Another slight misunderstanding. Holy Cross discontinuation of services was not discontinuing the services that we were paying for, but they decided to let go of a couple of the HUD contracts and allow other agencies to pick those up because they weren't able to maintain them. And so that was that one. The funds that we're providing them or that we're proposing that they get this year has to do with their shelter, but it's not to serve as the HARA, as the HARA, nor does it help with the rapid rehousing and the permanent supportive housing work that they were doing.
Okay. Thank you. And then also on your personnel budget, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like in fiscal year 2021, it was about 400 active personnel, about 466,599. And then it looks in adopted budget 1.1 in 2022, projected budget 1.1 2022, and then proposed budget 1, 2023 at 1.17. Also, it's quite a bit of change over the last year with, with staffing, it seems. And I know that, you know, several departments are understaffed throughout the city. And so when we were asking, was there any changes? I know from maybe last year, there wasn't much change, but the year before till now is a significant change. And of course, I knew maybe I could be reading it wrong, but if you could speak on that, I would appreciate it.
Sure thing. Would you want to take it? You want me to take it? Yeah. Mr. Brown, as far as our, our recommendation or the difference between this year and last year is very minimal. I mean, you're looking at a 1.5% increase and it's basically due to an increase in retirement. So it's not an increase in staffing. Our staffing remains the same.
So from 2021, I'm not sure if you have, they don't?
Yeah. Overall, looking at the departmental summary where I think you're getting those numbers from, one of the factors that affects HRCS salary is the number of grants that they work with. And so many of those grants cover the administrative costs of providing those. And so we are able to offset the salaries from within the department and apply them to the grants instead of the general fund. And so while we budget the full cost of all HRCS employees to cover them over the fiscal year, there are times where they're able to apply their time towards specific grants. And so that's why the FY21 actuals numbers are as low as they appear here.
It's a little hard to hear you, but basically what you're saying is the $460,000 from 2021 has increased to 1.1, 1.1 in 2023 proposed, but it's due to the additional funds coming in as the administrative of extra?
Or rather, the accounting of the funds where personnel of, let's just say approximately $1 million, some $500,000 of that dollars was applied to various grants.
Correct. Okay. So there is.
In addition or subtraction of vacancy factors as well and other.
Correct. Okay. That makes sense. So there is a change. So my question is, with the change, are, do you guys have more staff or a larger team or is it the same team doing more work?
It's the same team. We have not increased our staffing.
Okay. And lastly, I noticed on the Human Relations Grant Fund applications, you have Healing Hands Urgent Care Center. And I wasn't sure if they were still open. There was different media and things, that there was different things going on with the licensing of the facility? Was that checked or is that open status?
I can't speak to that. I don't know. I can't speak to Healing Hands.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll need that to be checked in, into obviously.
If, if they are on the list, they have provided us with the documentation necessary for them to be a funded agency. So, but I, I can't speak to any licensing.
So when you, when you do, and being a little familiar, not all the way, of course, being on the advisory board for a few years, when you do the application process, I know it's really heavy on program and program description. However, do you check medical licenses and those type of things through your process? When individual groups are saying that they're providing mental health therapy, are you looking to, or do you do the research to make sure that the therapists are actually licensed? Do you look to see if, I was on a previous organization where they would, you know, when the medical people were credentialed, we would have information to know if they had any marks or what their kind of, their professional history was, you know, that came along with applying for those type of skilled or licensed services? Is that something that HRCS does?
We have not done any investigations on anybody who claims to have had or, or anybody that hold medical license. We base it all on the agency and the fact that they have a board of directors and their board of directors are required to hire the relevant staff. And so we base everything on what they currently bring to the table, any documentation that they have to have for governance and the fact that they have a board.
Lastly, thank you so much. Lastly, we, we've had a lot of, you know, need with, with COVID pandemic, COVID. Are you seeing with, you know, you came in in the midst of it and then we've had a greater need? Have you guys made any changes? I know that you said you haven't changed the department at all, but has there been any changes or how have you accommodated the trends that are different than they were, you know, before the pandemic? And, and is, you know, is there a way forward?
Well, we have not changed with regard to the number of staffing, but we do have to change the way we do business. And we have been afforded additional funds over the pandemic, which allowed us to do additional work as well. And so yes, we've had to make some adjustments in what we do and how we serve the public in light of the fact that there has been the pandemic and that it still exists.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. I do, I do not believe we have further questions, do we? Fantastic. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, we did. Chief Sozabi did reach out to.
All right. Yes, we did. Chief Sozobee did reach out to me. There was an incident in East Lansing that he had to attend to. I promised him that we would bring him back in on May 9, and we would actually let him go first. We certainly don't want to shortchange that conversation. So, with that being said, we have actually exhausted our agenda with no further business before the body. We are adjourned at 7:31. We will convene our city council meeting, let's say, at 7:40.